Hey everyone, it's Mike with It's Pittsfield Tonight. I am here back at Currency Coffee in the Allendale Underground with the owner, George. George, thank you again for doing these.
Of course.
And today we are with our Pittsfield at-large city councillor and president of the city council, Peter Marquetti. Peter, thank you for doing this.
Thank you for hosting.
Absolutely. So this basically is a question and answer format. It's going to be a video format that we're going to post in the next three days. So I'm going to start with George as the host of this, but as a business owner, he wanted to ask a couple of questions to get it started. So I'll give you the mic, George, and we can get this rolling and we'll go from there.
Excellent. Mike, thank you. First off, thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
This is huge. I never thought we'd be hosting mayoral candidates, but you know what? Coffee houses over the centuries have always been political things, so we stay out of the politic end, but I like seeing people come in and have a conversation.
And I think the more people that ask us to have these conversations, the better informed the community can be.
Absolutely.
And so when possible, we should do them.
Excellent. So I'm going to ask you the same question that I've asked the previous two candidates. In fairness, I don't like changing things up. Let's be consistent, if nothing else. So with, there's a national downturn in tax revenue coming in. I know it's affecting the county, it affects the city. As business changes, as the economics of the county changes, we're seeing the city change. It's inevitable. What would be your plan to begin to bring either new businesses into the county and/or how do we help the existing businesses grow and just foster a better relationship with the community itself? How can the city be that catalyst?
So I think that's a multifaceted conversation and approach. First off, it would be to educate folks both in and outside of the area of the possibilities of the William Stanley Business Park and the investments that are going to be made there within the very near future with the millions of dollars' worth of investments to get three parcels of property prepared that will be shovel-ready for companies to move to town. I think the other piece is to really kind of focus on workforce development training. We know that there are a number of jobs that go unfilled currently, and so when we talk about job creation, let's fill the jobs that we have before we bring additional jobs to Pittsfield. And then I think the third piece is not related to business at all, but it's let's take a look at the budget. And in my sense, the budgets over the years have been, okay, there's our budget, we know that salaries have gone up by X percent, cost of doing business has gone up by X percent, and that's how the budget grows. And so the conversation really needs to be had as to how can we find a more efficient way to provide the same level of services to the folks that we provide them to without having to continue to raise the budget.
Excellent. So a bit of a follow-up. It's always been a chicken and egg problem for communities, especially in the Rust Belt, and we were no exception to that. When you have jobs that need to be filled and the lack of people, what comes first? Is it the businesses? Is it the training? Is it the education? Because right now, you have kids leaving, you know, the Pittsfield High Schools, both of them, and they don't stay. They tend to leave. So we do have jobs here, we all know that. We have jobs. And it's not an advertisement for people coming to work for us right now, but we have a lot of opportunities in this county for people to work. So it's making it more approachable. How do you solve that one part of the chicken and the egg problem to make sure people stay here and give them the incentives to?
So I don't think that you can focus on just one. I think you have to focus on all three of them at the same time, because you fill the gap over here, but you're bleeding over here, then you stop the bleeding here, and you're still bleeding here. So I think you have to work at all three. I think for the incentives and in this campaign, I've already reached out once to a group of folks that are under 40 and plan on having a couple more social events to be able to grasp from the under 40, because that's what we're talking about. Why are you leaving? And the number one thing you hear is there's nothing to do. And then I go, well, come on, there's all these things to do, but it's a nightlife. It's a social aspect that they're not getting. And so we need to kind of have to look at that and try to focus on that to be able to retain them as well. And I think we know that statistics will show that folks 18 are leaving to go to college, and from 22 when they graduate, maybe to 30, they're staying away, but at 30, they're coming back. And they're coming back to raise their family and a community that is what they say is worthy to raise a family.
Okay. So one of the things bringing up to the other people, and we were talking about code enforcement, inspections, and how City Hall operates for, and I'm very focused on the business community, and not just retail, but industrial, et cetera. What's a plan to open up City Hall, to make things more accessible and more transparent? And there's one other word: it's consistent. Because there's been some inconsistencies through dealing with certain departments. I know for a fact there are contractors that will not work in this city, and that's because of inconsistencies. How are you going to, how do you address that?
So I think it's, again, a multifaceted approach. Number one, it's let's hold our department heads accountable and understand what they're doing. In my opinion, the vision and the leadership comes from the corner office, and the directive comes from the corner office. It doesn't come from the department heads back to the corner office. I hear it all the time on the campaign trail. I think that we've made some improvements with some online permitting processing, but, you know, I give an example. Years ago, the, I call it the gas station chicken place on the corner of East and Lyman almost, they put tons of money investing into opening a facility, and at the end of the day, there was a struggle with the Board of Health because, well, they needed a tobacco permit and couldn't get it. And, you know, it was part of their business plan, and it was part of how they were going to sustain themselves. And, you know, at that point in time, Councillors Mazze O'Connell, myself, and the mayor, you know, went to the Board of Health to kind of defend, and there was a lack of communication in the process. And, well, we told you, no you didn't. Well, let's like provide some checklists and let's do some follow-up, right? If you're a brand-new business owner, do you really have the wherewithal that you need in order to develop a successful business? So here we are, we're the professionals, right? When we're talking about our health inspector, we're talking about our building inspector, we're talking about our code enforcement people. We're the professionals. Let's lend them a hand, right? It's not us versus them. In order for them to succeed, we need to help them. And when they succeed, the city succeeds. And so it's creating a dialogue, it's creating maybe some workshops to say, hey, you want to open shop in Pittsfield? Here is all the players, and here is the checklist, and here is what we need to go through. And, you know, they file an application, and it's not perfectly correct, call them up, invite them in, come in and say, okay, there's a lot of gaps in this application, or, you know, you answered question six the wrong, you know, has nothing to do with the question. This is what it means, this is what we need. And I think if we do that, we'll get a reputation of being a more business-friendly community.
Excellent. One of the things that we've all dealt with during COVID was certain grants and certain monies that were available to businesses. And we were able to get some, we were not able to get others. It happens. But in talking with other people in the business community, there had seemed to be some favoritism, alleged, that was happening with certain monies coming out of the city and other things. And a dear friend of mine who lives outside the state, the city that he works and lives in, they had some issues with that as well, and they solved it by changing the city charter a little bit. They hired a large accounting for KPMG. I'm sure you've heard of them. And what they did, now that city writes all the grants, they do everything they need to do, and they turn it over to KPMG to go ahead and take all the financials and deal with it, and then decide on who should be getting the grants. It alleviated a lot of the political back and forth, and it actually alleviated a lawsuit in that city too. But by de-politicizing the monies, they've been able to expedite things in the city. Are you looking at doing things, you know, would you look at doing things similar to that, where we can help things be a little less political and a bit more aboveboard and analytical?
So I wouldn't be opposed to it. Like, the very first question that went through my mind is, how much is KPMG charging to do this such? And so if I have a million dollars' worth of grants and I have to give $200,000 to KPMG to process it, then at the end of the day, is that beneficial to the city? But I think, no matter what you do, in government, there's always going to be one side or the other that thinks that, you know, there's a public insider. And so I think transparency is the biggest piece, and I wouldn't be opposed to creating potentially an independent board with bankers and accountants to kind of do some of the grant reviews. So it would be a new commission for the city to kind of do a second review. Now, obviously, that's not going to completely solve the problem, because who gets to appoint those people, and will that cause a problem? But I think there's a lot of resources out there in the banking and financial world to be able to lend a hand to at least kind of, you know, evaluating a financial statement is evaluating a financial statement. It doesn't get political.
Right.
You're either making money or you don't. You've got a good business plan or you don't. And so if you have someone in that community trying to set that straight, you know, I've met with a few folks doing door-to-door who have alleged those complaints, and I've said, well, can I find out why? And it goes back to poor application writing. And so, you know, it goes back to my earlier comments of, well, where are we? To say, okay, well, your application is only 50% complete, can you come on in and can we help you complete it? Because for someone to be denied because they didn't complete a process correctly is not a proper reason. If someone's being declined because, you know, it's just a bad business model, and that does exist out there, then that makes sense.
And lastly, the one question that came up is, you know, throughout the city, we've had issues with people, you know, on corners panhandling. We know of homeless encampments throughout the city, and some of those homeless encampments are also open-air drug markets at times. The city's been struggling with that, as a lot of cities have. What's your plan to either alleviate that, solve, however you want to put it? I know there is no magic pill for this, but what is the plan to help Pittsfield have that better image where we are either taking care of these people or we're looking at stopping this, you know, the drug markets and the homeless problem? How do we help all this? What's the plan for that?
So that's a really interesting question, because like, very simply, you could go arrest them and pull them out of the parks. But I'm going to catch on to a phrase that you said that would allow a good public image. And I'm not so sure that that's the good public image. I think that we need to step back and look at the bottom line. And I think this goes to the crime problem as well. We know that we have a community that is full of mental health issues. We know that we're a community full of substance use disorder issues. We know that there's a good number of people living in poverty. All three of those combined are causing some of the problems that we're facing. And in some cases, someone who's addicted to a substance is there because of a mental health issue. And so we need to, as a community, and, you know, I was at a conversation, something like this, not recorded, and we had a, you know, what are you going to do? And my response was, we need to focus on mental health and substance use disorder issues. We need to go to the state and demand additional resources. Now, if we were to get a million dollars tomorrow to put towards those issues, we don't have the manpower to even begin that, because our social worker count is low, and we don't have the resources. And so we've got to build those up. You can't, you know, people say, they're homeless, just find them a place to live. Let's get them the life skills that they need in order to allow that to happen. And I think the city's making progress right now with affordable housing, with, you know, four different locations developing affordable housing. Was it done necessarily the correct way? No, but it's moving forward, and we're working on that. And so it's advocating for mental health and substance use disorder, resources and bodies and services.
You mentioned about affordable housing. There are a lot of open units in this city. Some of the properties are even owned by the city because of back taxes, et cetera. How do you clear that up? How do you go back and start doing an audit of these open units? Because we do need housing in this city, we've known that for a long time. But the city-owned properties that have either been reclaimed because of back taxes, et cetera, has there been an audit of that? Is that something that can be done a little bit more expeditiously, so they can either be put back on the market, developed, or et cetera?
So there is a listing of that information, and I would counter with, we've already begun that process. The city council, two years ago, advocated for additional building inspectors, and that was specifically for that purpose, of to do the code enforcement to these apartments. It's taking too long, and we need to kind of put some more oomph into that plan. But I think we've started to make some progress, and we need to continue. And if it means hire another inspector to get the job done, then that's what we need to do. Because I think the issue is, and we missed the big word, it's quality, affordable housing. It can't just be, here's a place for you to live, and, you know, the ceiling's fallen through because the bathtub upstairs is leaking. It needs to be quality.
Well, we have some of the oldest housing stock in the state. Is there a plan maybe to start redevelopment? Is that something that Pittsfield's ever looked at?
I would be cautious about redevelopment without a solid plan, but it would be something that I would look towards, and, you know, this is a perfect conversation to have with the building trades and the carpenters' union, to say, hey, here's a problem, can you be part of the solution? And, you know, I think as I become mayor, one of the things that I've talked about a number of times is, let's create roundtables. And let's get the people who are really impacted to the table. So let's have a business community roundtable. And that's a difficult thing to do, because are you a small business or a large corporation? Your needs are different. So I think we have to balance that. We know that we have issues within, in the school department, and as a member of the school committee, is it just taking the word of the superintendent, or is it having roundtables with teachers and paraprofessionals to say, you're the ones in the classroom, you're the ones that see the problems firsthand? Are we really addressing the situation? And so the same with the housing stock. We know that we have friends in the building trades and carpenters' union that would be dying to come to the table to give us a hand. So let's bring them in and help, ask them to be part of the solution.
Well, I'm going to give you the mic and let you make a statement, or if Mike wants to continue in. Thank you anyway. Now I am going to step.
All right. Well, I have a question that I'm going to ask for someone that they texted to me. This is a business owner on North Street, but they wanted to kind of stay low-key. So basically, their question is this. Recently, near White Terrace, they put up, in the past week or two, chain-link fencing back there, which was a normal hangout for people during the day. Now, since then, that whole part of the street, both sides, like yesterday, we counted 30 people there, we stopped by to see him, and it's becoming quickly an increasing problem because they're hanging out and drinking. So the first, it's, I guess, a two-tier question, but the first part is, what can be done about that before that escalates even further? And the other question he had was, he felt like, what is the city waiting for? Like, there's a whole section of North Street that is open, empty buildings, empty storefronts that are posted that construction will be coming soon. Do you have any word on what, if anything, is coming to those?
So let's start with White Terrace.
Okay.
I know, so the chain-link fence, I'm sure, is because White Terrace was just recently sold to a developer who is going to develop that area with affordable housing units, and that was one of the places that I referred to when I was answering one of the questions for George. And so secondly, if we're having people just congregating, and that's all they're doing is sitting there drinking, you know, we need hourly police presence to kind of move them along. In terms of the construction, I am not aware. My assumption is twofold. One is COVID, and two, what made sense pre-COVID from a building perspective and what makes sense post-COVID are not the same things. And so with the lack of being able to get some of the resources that you need, and I have not personally reached out, my vision of North Street, which is kind of pie in the sky at this stage of the game, is to come in and evaluate North Street. I've been no big, I've not really hit it. I would love to try to create a downtown pedestrian mall that creates a destination point in downtown Pittsfield. And so, again, there's another one of the communities that we need a roundtable for, and we need everyone at the table. So Downtown Pittsfield Inc. does a great job of advocating for their members and some of the other people, and they just recently advocated for diagonal parking, but does that represent what everybody on North Street wants to see? And so we need to kind of...
Is that something that's still on the table with the parking?
That is something that's still on the table. It's sitting at Traffic Commission. And so, you know, once elected, start having the conversations with the folks of, how can the city best serve your needs?
Okay. And you had a question you want, okay?
First of all, I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak to you one-on-one like this. Over the past eight years, my property taxes have gone up by 40%. My water bill is threefold of what it was. Two-part question: what did I get for this extra money? And is this a trend that's going to be continuing in the future? Because it's pricing people, you know, of average income out of the area. Thank you.
So let me start with the second.
There you go.
Let me start with the second part of the question first. The water sewer rates, in my opinion, we need to develop a plan that is almost a yearly plan. So taxes go up on a yearly basis. We know that the expenses of our water and sewer treatment plants increase on a yearly basis. If we were to implement a yearly increase, say a 5% or 6% to our water and sewer bills, you're still paying the money, but I know, like you, I own a house with two bathrooms, so I'm getting hit with those increases, and your bill kind of goes up by 50%, all in one big wham. If I was to have seen that happen at 10% a year over five years, I'm not going to be happy with what my water sewer bill is, but it's going to be more manageable for me. And so that's, I think, the first part of how do we kind of alleviate some of that stuff? The answer to what you're getting now is, there's been improvements to the sewer plant, and there will be some made to the water plant. The sewer plant stuff was a $50 million investment that is basically coming back to us at 0% interest, based on how it was structured with the state. On the tax issue, it's a little bit more of a complicated issue, because there's multiple things that go into your tax bill. And so we can all play semantics and say, well, I voted to reduce your tax rate this year, it went down by 42 cents. But endgame, your tax bill went up by $1,000. And so there's a piece of the puzzle that the city can't control, and that is the value of your home. So as your, you know, your taxes are twofold. One, it's your tax rate, and two, it's your property value. And so we have seen in Pittsfield over the last two to three years, a huge surge in our property values and our housing market. And so the value of your house, even though you've done nothing, is dependent upon the houses around you. And so I can give you an example. In my neighborhood, I've had a house across the street sell for $369. I had a house two doors down sell for $400. And recently, one went on the market for $529, and it sold within two weeks. And I haven't seen what the actual price is. But when the city starts to do the reevaluation next year, those sales impact the value of my house. I bought my house, I moved from Cortland to Valentine Road in 2015. I bought my house for $205, and it's now valued at almost $300. And that's before these houses around me sold. So that's the second piece of the puzzle that I don't think folks fully understand, is that your property value has an impact of what your tax bill is. And so then that goes back to, when we're doing our budgets, do we just keep adding on a percentage because we know that's what it needs? Or do we really take some in-depth looks, department by department, and are we funding things that we don't really need to fund?
You were part of the council that worked out the deal to have some liquor licenses added for the city. We all know there's a complicated formula, and it was a while ago. And I'm curious, because I know you just mentioned that nightlife was one of the issues and that you hope to address that. I'm curious whether you would be willing to reopen that discussion and see if there is demand for additional liquor licenses, and that that might be one way to fill some of those storefronts and keep some of our young people happy in the downtown.
The answer to that question is absolutely. When we look at where the city is, we need to meet businesses of what they need. And, you know, my fear of liquor licenses, even though it's not supposed to happen this way, I'm selling my business, and the price tag on my business includes my liquor license. And so liquor licenses really shouldn't be a bargaining chip for selling a business. And so it puts a brand-new business that's trying to open at a disadvantage. And so, you know, I'm all for trying to create an atmosphere for the under 40 and a nightclub environment. However, we need to make sure that we do that under the right circumstances, and, you know, the nightclub needs to recognize that they're going to have to answer to the licensing board. And the same would be true with any additional liquor licenses that we would add for restaurants. You've got the same issues that you need to be focused on.
The previous two candidates brought up something somewhat, almost by accident. So we've had a huge growth in the cannabis industry within the city. And I know there are certain permits allotted and whatnot, and I have no issues with the businesses and all that. The amount of tax money that's been collected and what the future projections may or may not be, is the city being, is the money coming in from the cannabis industry, in your opinion, being used to its fullest extent? And if there's a downturn, how does that affect the city and the taxes that you need to collect from other sources?
So personally, if I had got my way when I went to the ballot box, there wouldn't be that revenue, because I was one of the people who voted no. But it is what it is, and we're there. I was on the city council when we voted the number of permits. The mayor had proposed a small amount, and the city council went, well, if we can have X number of liquor stores, we can have X number of pot shops. I think that revenue is going to decline for sure, because when we look at where we are, we are kind of at the cornerstone of New York and Connecticut. Both states who are very close to legalizing and opening their own shops. So even though we're not supposed to sell cannabis for someone who's going to take it across state lines, it happens on a regular basis, and so that revenue's there. That revenue totals about $1 million a year. And I think if we look at the trends, and I don't want to completely quote it, but I already think we're on the decline. I think that we've seen our higher numbers, and it's going to start to decline. The way that we're using the money, 50% of the money goes to our general fund as local receipts, which is helping to offset the tax rate. The other 50%, 25% of it goes into a public works stabilization fund. And the wherewithal of that, the city council created that, and that was so that the city had money to buy public works equipment or to do additional roads, which I think is a good idea. And the other 25% is going to the stabilization fund to be able to build our reserves on a yearly basis. My sense is that 25% to go into the stabilization fund could be looked at, to either go into local receipts or additional monies to the public works stabilization fund, because I think, you know, people want to see something from it.
Okay. Well, thank you. Here, I, thanks for coming. I'll turn it back over to Mike, and he can do whatever he needs for the goodbyes, but thank you. I sincerely appreciate it.
All right. Well, I will do a closing. So Peter, thank you for doing this.
Thank you.
George, thank you. This was fun. We did three full days with all three candidates. I think it's a lot of good information that's out there. And I wanted to ask you real quick, I asked the other ones, I'm getting ready to schedule another mayoral debate.
No.
I'm assuming that means yes. So I will be in touch with your camp to see if I can get you in on that. And that's it. So thanks again, and enjoy the rest of your day.
We'll see you at the debate.
Absolutely. Absolutely.